Good evening, everybody. We'll call to order the regularly scheduled board meeting. First item on the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from April 5th.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 5th meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you, Tammy.
A second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Can you throw the discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll take the votes. All those in favor, seven five are saying aye.
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 Post, extensions, and that motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of April 5th as presented.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Joe. Can you throw the discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, seven five are saying aye.
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 Post, extensions, and that motion carries. Next up, we have educational focus, the middle school YLTA.
I have Nora and I have Hazel, who are just representing the group of Yalta. So these are their middle school youth leadership through venture or through DAP. This group has been working all year on putting together a project for Gaga pit on our playground. So it would be the front field playground. The kids have worked on surveys, they have worked together as a group for plans, ways to possibly fund it, why we want it. So these girls are here tonight just to show a quick slideshow of what we've been working on, offer any comments or questions, and we'll go ahead.
Gaga is a game that's played in typically an octagon bend structure. There's kind of as many people that fit into the thing, and then there's a ball on the ground that you toss below people's ways to kind of get them out. You can maybe really find that reset because we just have four square and basketball and a field, and a lot of chances for us to do four square, pass away in a line for the whole reset. And there's typically a group of kids who just like get it and run out, and it's really boring. We can Gaga for the kids and people.
And there's some people that don't play, like, or do anything, probably just thinking of another option.
We even like to build the Gaga pit ourselves through Delta. There are options to buy it, so we think if you guys are able to build it and then have it be from the school. That is the stuff.
This is the Gaga pit at Fort Central School that Adapt and the local Boy Scout troop, I believe. This model doesn't have a gate that opens, the kids enter in those low spots, but we were thinking maybe of having a gate so that everybody could access it. The gates don't have to always be open and closed, but it would also give an option for people to get in who can't get over, if you will.
The estimated cost is about $460. That's just the materials we would need to build it, not for the flooring. We are planning to send a letter to PPA and Booster Club asking if they would like to help with that. We also would like to raise some money, and if we need more, ask for sponsors.
They also had a really good idea of maybe if sponsors did, we could also maybe put the sponsors' names on the outside of the Gaga pit, just to show that we need support.
Thank you very much.
Ladies, if you want to know any comments or questions, I don't know if there is any.
It's going to be a permanent Gaga pit, you're not going to be able to move it.
We could make movable ones, but I think a permanent one would be good, better closer than down.
I agree. Great idea. Good job.
Have you looked at it, any ideas of where you would like to put it, or?
Yeah, we have a general idea.
Off to the side, there's that. Four square, where the pavement is, and thinking maybe kind of somewhere in that area on the grass, wood chips to help keep it from getting really muddy in those wetter times.
Do you know approximately how long one of those is?
They can vary.
I mean roughly.
Yeah, they can vary in size, like, bigger than this inner circle. I've seen them kind of this small, a little bit bigger, you get to appropriate more kids with a little bit more space to move around.
Never seen that.
Flexibility as far as, it can be built to the site as well, not specifically.
Thank you very much.
Equipment, what do you use, what do you need to put?
Just a kickball.
For sizing, I'm kind of thinking like, study the diameter. Let me ask again about the goal thing it looks like.
Can you talk a little bit about, when we met, you talked about the rules and what you would do with that? Because I thought that was really relevant.
You want to have a very noticeable sign of rules, so that way not just like one person in the game can be controlling all the talking stuff. The ball would have to be hit lower waist, get out nowhere higher.
A sign is a good idea.
Absolutely.
We thought it would help the teachers as well, or others, not to feel like they have to add to it as far as rules to be posted, and that's just what the rules are.
Sounds like a pretty safe game.
It's a fun game. Good for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They're so cute.
So I'm Kristen Fadden, and we have been doing the Lego robotics for most part of this school year. And it's about 20 or so kids per group. We have K2, K2 and K3, five sessions. If you want to, we'll set up, remember the exact number.
Of course. One month, and I don't know, I used to cut strings.
It was cute as ours.
About 33 students, K2, five, throughout the three quarters, the three sessions. 19 of those 33 repeated at least two or more of those sessions. And so the next couple slides, those are just pictures of the kids enjoying their time. And this is our big group picture, and we asked the kids what robotics was. And so they said, problem solving, awesome, amazing teamwork, out of this world, creative, cool, and fun. And so I'm going to now turn it over, and they're going to introduce themselves, and they're going to take it from here.
Okay, first of all, thanks for coming. My name is Dawson.
My name is Ila.
My name is Jaxson.
And I'm Seamus, I just held out that as well.
I'm going to be sharing how we planned and built that. So we, like, sketched it, and we problem solved, and we edited and revised, and we had breakdowns along the way with what we learned from our mistakes, and we were confident, and we powered through it. We had airlines. Gita stands for, because they're really important. Jaxson, Ila, Dawson, and Alex.
All right, and the four center, this is the four center. And once you click the play button on the scroll, you press that button, and then it says welcome on the hub right here. And then there's a little speech about the airline, and then it moves.
We had a lot of trouble with the coding, but we persevered and flipped.
What did you choose to end up doing?
We chose to end up doing forward, then going backwards, because in turning would not be a good idea, because it is very top-heavy and would flip over if it turned. So we decided no.
Everybody will show up? So we're wondering if we can go from here to here kind of thing, so I don't know, we might want to stand up and see if it's moving. All right, now.
Welcome to Judah Airlines, please ask for your seatbelt and your belongings. Thank you.
Well, that's awesome.
Better than a regular L, I mean, no doubt.
Very nice.
Thank you for coming, any questions?
That was really great.
What was the hardest part?
I hear you come here.
Maybe the coding. It was off code.
And like the skinny bar, or like the sticks that we tried to hold up, because we had to use, I don't even know, three bins.
How many did you start with?
We started with two.
And what happened?
And we, it fell a lot, so we had to do four poles to support each.
It is very cool. Yeah, that's great. Thank you for sharing.
Yes.
I have a quick question before you get out of here. So my wonder is, I know many of you did more than one session. You know, I think all of you, actually. So my wonder is, is did you use anything that you learned in those first session or your second session to help design this? Because this wasn't your first ever attempt at programming, right?
No.
Or you did a bunch of stuff before that? So could you share a little bit about that? Like, what did you do earlier in the year that helped you with this?
Earlier in the year, we were working on coding, and it definitely helped us make this.
So, and in the beginning, right? Because what we didn't really mention was, this was their own design and their own coding. Part of the program has units and lessons that will say, build this, put this piece next, put this next, and then build and code, they have a challenge. And so they have to, you know, it might be from day one point eight, it might be, but it'll give like hints of, use the forward, you know, right? In the beginning, we'll get friends. And so you using those two sessions were able to create the end code this completely without any assistance. That was done by these four.
Fantastic.
And that was all done in one, in one session? This, this design?
But how many days did you guys use? We do two, we do Tuesdays and Thursdays, we do after-school, and you guys used four of those days.
Nice.
Wow.
Are they going to continue this every year, or is it just this year? We are hoping for this to continue in the old room.
Excellent, yes.
Been a lot of success in a lot of. In my room, because of the room we use, it's a multi-usage room, and I have a nice counter in my personal room, and so a lot of times creations are stored because they don't fit in the bin. And just by the creations being, what is that? Where did that, what are you doing? And so that has created a lot more interest of, I want to join. How can you join? You know, you have your parents email, it's, you know, it's simple, and.
Excellent.
Yeah. So we have 10 kids right now.
Five of the lower grade ones, five of the higher grade ones. So there's a lot of interest in the high-grade ones, too, because there's just, as you can see, there's so many other things that you can do with coding and building, the different materials that are in that one, whereas the, the other kid is more probably the, the lower grade, the basics of to start with. But then when we have so many students who want to keep coming back and using those ones, there's not as many kits for those students to use. So we have the, as you can see, there's four of them that collaborated together to make this structure by using multiple kits to do it, so.
Do you already have new ideas for the next build?
Oh, yeah. They're ready. Well, thank you so much for bringing it in.
Very cool.
Great presentation.
Yeah, great job.
All right, next up, we have, next up, we have correspondence, I didn't receive anything.
No, just the postgraduate study that's in your, in your package. Yeah, look at that. It's really interesting to.
It was, yeah. Yeah, I love it in here.
Deb, I had a question about that. When does it get sent out? Because there's, there's a 41% response rate on that.
Yeah, that gets sent out at the end of the school year, but this is 2021 class.
Right.
This is 21.
My question is, do they? Why is that so long?
Well, they try to get, at the very beginning, on that first page, it will give you how many they tried to call, you know, they tried calling all of them. The results of the calling, some they couldn't get, that's who they could get. Yeah, that was cool. In this particular one, it was only 10 students that got results from.
Deb, is this Mr. Zepplin's report?
Cute manifest, we're trying to, next week we won't be here, so we did accounts payable and payroll this week. And I'll be talking about the school lunch contract further on.
Thank you. Dr. McGinn?
Yeah, we have, like, all current openings for the district so far that we know of have been posted, and we will begin interviewing for the week of May 5th, as soon as we get back from vacation. So, and that's when the teachers have to pass in all of their contracts, so we'll know if there's anyone that's not going to get back right now.
How long's it been out there?
I'm sorry?
How long has it been out there, those positions? How long have they been out of the school?
We just.
Oh, gotcha.
So they do in May 5th is the application deadline.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, and you know, the rattling noise in the, in the, was fixed.
Not telling him.
We're working on the lights.
As I say, that's.
Not telling him.
Wherever it's coming from, I don't know.
They'll talk about that.
They'll cover that.
The rest was just vacillances. The week of May 8th is teacher appreciation week, and we would like the board, beverage, to assist in any way they can. We're doing a different thing, we're doing lunch this time. And so, you know, anything you can think of, soup, salads, desserts, you know, crock pot ideas.
That's on May 10th, is the?
That's May 10th.
Just let us know. Just try to coordinate with the admin, because the admin is actually doing the lunch.
We're doing lunch.
The admin school board will be.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, the rest we could finish when we get to the men, agenda, as we go through.
Great. And Mr. Furbinon?
Yeah, thanks for having me. You have the list in there, there's, you know, there's not really a whole lot to that, but what I really want to address is the previous weeks and tonight's event of student-led conferences, presentations of learning. It was awesome. I think the elementary had 100% of the kids accounted for. We're not, we're not quite there, but we're pretty darn close. Kids, kids in the middle of high school were, you know, asking teachers and, and stuff to like sit in on those when they knew that other people wouldn't be available, parents, guardians. You know, I've heard teachers say that they have never seen this many parents at an event that wasn't like graduation or, or a sporting event for a long, long time, especially with conferences. Kids were leading the way, you know? We just guided them, and it was awesome to see that they just put in things. You know, we offered up a template. The elementary school was working with their kids. I guess those, there's, some of the responses I heard there were just pretty incredible as well. Watching kids go through those communication skills, the speaking skills, and presentation. You know, kids are always like, watch me, watch me, watch me, kind of thing. And what a better opportunity to watch your kids do something here. I thought it was marvelous, the turnout was great, teachers were excited. Parents had good things to say, as far as I know. I haven't heard any other feedback with good things, but, and even the kids who were a little apprehensive, they just hit it out of the park. It was awesome.
It was fun.
That was, and if you were able to make it, you had kids here, we appreciate you coming, it was, it was great.
It was awesome, yeah.
I would like to say, too, we, we figured out an address to our valedictorian and salutatorian. So the valedictorian is Shannon Drappo.
Nice.
Yep, and the salutatorian is Maddie Heitz.
Oh, fantastic, fantastic. Congratulations to both of them.
Committee reports facilities, I just met tonight.
Okay.
Do you want to?
Yeah, sure. There is one thing on there for board action, I'll leave that for last. The elementary heating system, the only thing that we really talked about was that. It wasn't about the actual bearing they had to replace in here. They did it when they came and did their annual maintenance. Mechanical services took care of it. See how quiet it is? Gym lights, here. Having a real hard time getting anybody to come in to do a bid on them. Sabre Electric is coming in, they've committed to it, I, sorry. No date as a commitment yet, but they are going to come in, give a price, and take care of these lights.
And it's just to like, get them to stop flickering, is that?
I would say they probably, yeah, do like, they redid the gym down there, and it stopped that altogether.
Yeah.
And I believe that is what the price is going to be, to eliminate it completely.
Do you know if this was like, and it wasn't that long ago that we had like all the lights in the building replaced with LEDs, is this part of that project?
Yes.
So that's.
It's been more than.
As I said, that was a.
Eight, nine years now, it's been a while.
But these are adapted to fit, they weren't designed for it, so I think that's.
Yes, these were adapted, because those, they're hooked on to the old lights up there. They just put these lights on going. I was here when they did that, so it's before 2013.
Yeah.
So we're talking 10 years.
Yeah.
It's been, yeah.
More than 10 years, yeah.
Guaranteed for five years.
Gotcha. Okay.
The high school heating project, it looks like we're in a little bit better situation now where it looks like all the parts are going to be here. So that everything will be at least operational when we start school. There's a couple, the middle school wing and the math wing. They have, one of the curves will be set on the roof. They're not positive, the machine will be set for school, but they still have all the air and everything going, so it won't be that big of a deal for that particular section. And it looks like that'll be done right as schools start at the latest. So it looks like we'll be in good shape for the start of school as far as that stuff goes.
So is that no more just two-phase project, or is it still?
They'll probably have to finish up in the spring, I would assume.
Ah, the way Mark said, he said that everything was coming in, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I'm just quoting.
Sure. Keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best.
We went over just basic summer project, but they're having a really, really hard time as I know, we have one person so far willing to bid on the windows and doors at the high school. And even that person only wants to do the windows, they don't want to do the doors. So Casey, me, we're going to try to put our few results out, see if we can, and Kevin, too, if he knows anybody, see if we can get a couple more bids to come in for that. We have to secure a contract by the end of June, or we lose that money. So we've got to do something quick, or just accept the bid that we have and go with it. But we really don't want to do that. We'd rather have somebody come in and do this project.
Partial completions, but nothing at all.
Well, exactly. But, and if it comes down to it, we will take that little bit of money instead of losing it all, obviously, but. The gym floor, the matting. I'm just going to lay it, lay it all out there, and then everybody can decide what we want to do with it afterwards. Because it's a board decision, it's nobody else. The guards that we put down, the felt that we roll out to protect the floor. I mean, it was, why, why are we not using it? And liability was the main reason we're not using it. Evidently, I didn't even know about it. People have fallen and actually broken bones because of that. I didn't know that part of it, it was just tonight. I know I have tripped on it myself, dancing with my wife on it, and I've seen a lot of people trip on it. The way it lays out, it's just, it's a disaster. But let me get through the whole thing. The broken bones part. When we presented this to the public, to have that floor redone, we presented it as we would protect the floor. We were buying this to protect the floor. We didn't know at the time how much of a hazard it was going to be. So the way it was laid out tonight is, Mark will do whatever he wants. If the board wants to put a policy in place that that thing will be used every time, he'll do it. It's just a matter of what the board decides. But, I mean, in my opinion, if we know it hurt somebody, and we put a policy in place, and somebody gets hurt, I think we kind of own it. You're an attorney, I'm not, that's just my personal opinion, but. And so we're just going to leave it up to the board, what the board thought we should do, and... Because that floor, every year, I mean, like, one part that I skipped. Mark is going to replace all the guards in the bottoms of the, the missing guards on the chairs, on the tables. You're going to do everything you can to protect the floors itself. The floor is re-screened and redone every year anyway. So any scratches that are actually in the floor, mostly are just in the finish anyway, and they're replaced. So there's no real damage to the floor, the wood itself.
And it says in Judy's report that the flooring company has been adding layers and layering coverage to protect the floor when the gym is used without the black mat. Is that the yearly that you're talking about?
Well, that's what I'm talking about. Technically, they screen off the layer. So, so it doesn't really.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It doesn't really go back.
Okay, sure.
They screen it off, and they, and they put a new coat on it every year. If there's, if it gets a dig into the lines or into the paint or whatever, they'll sand that right down, fix the paint, build it back up, blend it all in. So the only issue is, I mean, when we submitted the funds to the public, we told the public that we would protect it. So that's, that's where we're at.
When they talked us into purchasing that, we were told that it would add, and I forget how many years of life to the floor.
Yeah.
So not using it, are we deleting those years of life to that floor?
In my opinion, no.
Well, and I feel like sometimes we think something is a good idea, and then you learn that in practice, it doesn't, it sounds like it's a tripping hazard, the Velcro isn't working anymore, it doesn't hold it down.
I understand that, but we were told by the professionals that sold it to us, that it would add years to the floor, you know? Which is kind of why we, I say we loosely, kind of why it was purchased.
No, I agree.
We need to prioritize every year.
I don't disagree. I'm just curious.
We'll come in every year and do what Mark said, it's an annual fee of $1,700 to surface the floor. And I don't know how long the belt has not been used, but have we had any issues in that time? Sounds like no.
As far as tripping falls, is that your name?
Would tripping falls for it not providing an adequate surface to provide a basketball game or any other swimming event?
Yeah, I know when I was here, the, most of the damage came during spring pitching season, because there was still sand in the park, and a lot of people would come in. They did pitching in there in the same spot, and it would scuff it up. So, I mean, if they could just pay attention a little bit more to certain events, you know, versus putting that thing in there and hurting somebody knowingly. Once again, that's just my opinion, that's why we laid it out to the board. Aren't we knowing we put that in there, and somebody goes in there and gets hurt?
Geez Louise.
With the belt down. No, I mean, I think your thoughts are, are accurate. I mean, we're, we know that it's a, that it's a hazard, and we continue to use it, and certainly are.
We can't stand by it just because we went with it. Right, exactly. No, we can't stand by it just because we went with it. Right, exactly. Just because we purchased it, yeah.
Is there a way to, is there just not a way to, to secure it appropriately?
Even when it was brand new, it wasn't perfect.
Yeah, exactly. And it's, I mean, it's awkward. I mean, it's, and it's in pieces. So if the only way to do it really good would be to secure it altogether, then you wouldn't be able to move it.
There are way better systems too. If we, if, if protecting that floor was something that was a priority for us, we need something better than that's there. I don't know if you've ever been to Plymouth High School when they had, I think it was when they had the penny sale thing. They've got an amazing floor covering. Amazing.
I'll just go by with what we have.
Right. It's not felt. So I, I don't think we should be using that felt anymore. I mean, that's regardless of what we do or don't do. But if having a covering on the floor is the goal, we need something better or we just don't do it.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, what we have to decide.
I mean, there's no actual damage to the wood floor at this point anyway. So we could just let it go a year ago. You know what? Look at the damage we got to the floor. Refinish the floor and then get a cover for it.
When did we purchase the cover?
With the floor, two thousand sixteen, we put the floor in. I think it's two thousand sixteen.
You know, um, when was the last time it was used? I've never seen it on, so.
I have. It's been a couple of years.
Yeah, I was shopping, dancing a year or so ago. And we used it when we did a farm in there or a semi-formal as one of the other. Because we set the tables up in there and had it, had it in there. But even then, the kids were really struggling with it.
I struggled with it when it was brand new.
Exactly. We do. Like I said, we were in the, eating soda at the minute.
Yeah, it's, um, wasn't a good product to begin with, I think.
I mean, maybe the, maybe what we do is we, if, if it's something that we think is valuable to have, a floor cover, I mean, is explore other options, but discontinue using that thing until.
I would suggest.
Identify something and maybe it's not cost effective. Maybe it's cheaper to just repair it as it goes and go and.
I mean, we, we refinish it every year for the most part anyway.
Yeah.
What, one, six years has been a major damage to the floor?
No.
I would discontinue and dispose of because it's huge and takes up a huge amount of space in the multipurpose room. I would.
Well, that was part of the discussions.
It's not the big wall thing.
Was to keep, to keep it in the event that we needed to cover it for whatever reason. That's not to say to host an event per se, but just have it and cover it up. You got that. You spent the money on it. Who knows when, what that situation might be, but.
I know. I'm even drawing on that because even if we use it for a special occasion, we still open ourselves up to liability.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's not for someone walking on, but maybe there's, you know, the, the ceiling is being redone and it needs to cover.
Oh, yeah, good call.
That kind of.
Yeah, or you need to put machinery on it or storage.
Yeah, I mean, they do put desks and stuff in there and when they're redoing some of their classrooms and stuff. So I mean, it, it is, it does have a useful purpose.
And I liked your, your point on too, that make sure that the staff is diligent on making sure that the legs on all the tables and chairs have the, like I see one right now that doesn't too.
Yeah.
Busted.
And I think that was it. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. Staff nominations. Oh, sorry. Is there any other committees?
I didn't have any other committees.
Uh, nominations, recommendations, resignations?
I'd accept a resignation. Mark Pirbinow?
No.
I'm going to accept the resignation.
That was presented.
Darn it. I'll make a motion to accept Mark's resignation with regret, with severe regret.
Thank you, Joe.
And definitely with regret.
Darn it.
And, and a thank you from the district for everything you've done for us in pretty, sort of difficult years that, that you've worked through. I know that, that the last, you know, three years, four years, four years have not been easy. Especially as a new administrator, it's been, it's to step up and, and get us through that. We certainly appreciate it.
Yeah. And best wishes in the future endeavors.
Definitely. Uh, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, extensions, and that carries. Thank you, Mark.
Excellent.
So I'm assuming that's going to be posted now.
It's going to be posted.
Okay. Uh, school lunch contract.
Yeah, um, every year at this time, we bring you our school lunch contract mainly. Changing any of the lunch prices. I think that's seven, I think so. Sorry. Um, so we work with Cafe Services or Fresh Picks, as you'll see on this memo there. We have to go through the contract. We have to renew it with the state because federal monies and everything are involved. And then we look at some pricing and we make recommendations on the pricing. Just a couple notes. I mean, we have seen the subsidy or the amount that the school has to kick in at the end of each year increase extremely a lot since, since COVID really. And during COVID, everyone ate for free. Now we're back to the regular free and reduced model where people apply. Our numbers are down. The, the cost of food has increased dramatically. Labor has increased dramatically. There's shortages. And everyone that I have talked to has just seen that subsidy or the amount every, every year has been increasing. There is one thing that we've been getting and applying for. That we applied at the end of last year for this money that's coming from the state called supply chain assistance money. So that will actually help decrease our, that subsidy that we put in. So last year, at the end of the year, we received about ninety-nine hundred dollars. Um, so that isn't reflected in this. So in, in the end of the year, it should be a little bit better. Um, but this is just really what our contract is with Cafe Services. The supply chain assistance money just gives us some money to offset the costs, the increase in the cost of food that we had to purchase. And also, because a lot of things may not be available that weren't available before. So again, we had to replace with other items. So we just, we received ninety-nine hundred dollars at the end of last year for this year. It just got a second, it just got a second allocation of another ten thousand dollars. We just got that now. So we'll use up as much as we can this year. And I just applied for the third allocation. So that, again, it, it's helping. But it is what it is, I guess. So, you know, the only way really, and our enrollment numbers, our enrollment numbers, you know, and participation numbers are either flat or going down just because our enrollment's going down. So we have recommended some price increases. So on the, there's a letter there, Cafe Services on the back, you'll see the actual prices. So we're recommending that the elementary lunch increased by ten cents, so two dollars and ninety cents to three dollars. The middle high school lunch increased by a quarter, three dollars to three twenty-five. Um, the other increase, the adult lunches increased by a quarter from four to four twenty-five. Um, all of the breakfast prices going, increasing a quarter each. So elementary, a dollar seventy-five to two, middle high school, two to two twenty-five, and the adult from two seventy-five to three dollars. So with those numbers, that's where they came up with the subsidy of approximately fifty-four thousand dollars for next year.
That's not an increase in fifty-four thousand dollars, right?
No, no, it's about, um, eight thousand dollar increase over this year.
Looking at it though, you've got nine years of numbers here. It's only going to, elementary lunch has gone up fifty cents in nine years.
Yeah, yeah.
And middle high school lunch has gone up seventy-five cents in nine years. I mean, it's not.
I've looked at other districts around us where maybe a little bit lower, but not much at the quarter maybe.
Right.
You know, it's not, we don't want to outright, we, we want the kids to eat, you know?
So you need a board action.
Um, yeah, we usually vote to approve the renewal of the contract with these prices for the next.
Do you want that fifty-four thousand stated?
You can't, it's just a budget projection. It's just really renewing the contract for the next year.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Fresh Picks Cafe LLC contract as presented. Prices as presented.
Thank you, Terry. And Ashley, get the segment of Jasmine. Uh, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, extensions, and that motion carries.
Thank you for the info. It's helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, next up, uh, the grants.
And grants for twenty-three, twenty-four is any type of grant that's out there that we may be able to access and, and use. This, this statement gives us permission by the board to research and access any types of monies that are available.
So you need this motion?
Yeah.
I need a motion, yeah. And that needs to be read.
I'll make a motion for the, to grant the locals, the local school board gives the superintendent and/or doesn't need permission to seek, obtain, and expend any available funding to support or supplement the district's programs by grants for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you, Kami.
A second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any further discussion on that? I would just say that I think the administration does a great job. We get, we seem to get a lot of money.
Absolutely, yes.
So we appreciate it.
Jay, I just need you to sign after.
Yeah. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, and that motion carries. Uh, I don't see anything on the new business. We have our, is, is there any new business or?
No, I just wanted to make sure that, that the, uh, the memo of, of the press release for the elementary, that when they received the twenty-five thousand, for this twenty-five thousand dollars, the two grant, this was the press release that was coming in. So just want to make sure you get.
So it hasn't gone out yet. Um, the plan is I already have the email scheduled to send next week so that it gets put in the, um, the local courier for after vacation, but everyone's back to see it. And just to kind of advertise that.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Make sure that people know that we're getting it and then plan is underway. Um, right after vacation to get the year set up with it, so.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Esther Holmes?
Esther Holmes, we are moving forward and we're, um, everything seems to be in place in, in the, uh, with the project. So we're right on schedule.
Great. And that is like basically at the last day of school, they're going to start doing the thing you do.
Yeah, and, and one part of it is going to, can even start with the week before. Oh, that was mentioned. Yeah, yeah. Just a week before, they could bring in some of the stuff and, and do some, you know, of the project just to get it started. Once the kids leave and then they'll come right in and start on it.
So it'll be another busy, busy summer here.
Summer.
We got that hot water for the kids here. So leave all that going and just do everything they can around that.
Kids.
Uh, the strategic plan, what's happening now is, is all of the different activities that are, that are happening within the school integrated within the page or twelve are a reflection of the strategic plan. So we're, you know, correlating that and, and you'll have that, you know, in the next report when we do that.
And I, I remember as part of this, excuse me, strategic plan was the student-led conferences, which is cool to see.
Yeah, that was actually projected for next year to be fully in place. Actually, that is scheduled.
That's great. It's, it's good to see so much participation.
And excitement. My student was so excited, saved stuff forever to put in the, the binder to present and was just so excited for it. Very cool.
All right. Um, we had our student presentations, but do you guys have anything else you want to tell us? No? All right. Don't want to put you on the spot.
I want to know who the favorite teacher is. Don't you, don't tell me. I'm kidding.
Uh, we don't have the staff represented today, but.
They do have staff here.
We do have a staff person. Just hanging on. All right. And then public participation. Mr. Drappo?
Uh, yeah, I want to comment on the agenda item of business requiring board action, specifically staff nomination, recommendation, and resignation. Standing, uh, thing on every agenda, regular meeting, and with a policy which follows. We saw earlier tonight, we saw the, the proper handling of the resignation as it comes before the board. Uh, most recent resignation was not voted on nor approved by the board. At a March eighth meeting, it was simply mentioned in passing as a piece of correspondence. The lack of vote is in direct contradiction to policy GCQC, Resignation Professional Staff Member. As well as going against a well-established protocol of this board. Uh, by not following the policy, I feel like the board is doing itself a disservice. Sadly, there is a faction of our community who with our school and in turn the board grew serious issues under the rug, keep things hush-hush, gives people get out the other three bars. I don't subscribe to that. I never have. It's, it's a line of conspiracy thinking that has no merit. But treating this one resignation differently than other, any other just adds fuel to that fire. I'm not aware of any staff resignation not being officially approved by the board. In my five years of being on the board, through your part of that, I tend to be persistent. Policy GCQC first adopted in two thousand two just does not allow. In two thousand twenty-two alone, there were sixteen resignations and all of them were properly voted on by the board. Many of them were commonplace like tonight. Uh, but we've also had employees who have left us high and dry weeks before school started or ghosted us and just stopped showing up at work. You know, every single one of those resignations came before the board for a vote. They all needed approval by the board. Despite all the speculation and rumor around a particular resignation, I think of justification for not being brought before the board properly. There was a resignation, not a termination. It did not appear that it was common knowledge among board members that they would not be voting on it at the March sixth meeting. At the end, who went to end the meeting, Joe asked if we needed to vote, or should we say, we do, needed to vote on the resignation news? Full no. Uh, I can only surmise that advice is given to treat the business of this resignation differently in the effort to move forward quietly without board discussion. While I obviously can personally appreciate that sentiment, the board's inaction and deviation will only bring more scrutiny to it. Uh, the business of the board should center solely around fact, as it mostly does. I imagine the members of board aren't privy to many of the details regarding this employee's resignation, nor should they be, most likely, legally, even in the non-public sector. Every human being has bias, passes judgment, and is subject to influence of rumors. But the entity of the school board should always operate separate from any of that and conduct business in a consistent manner. Man, excuse me. Now, it's new at this point. I'm not here to ask you to go back and vote on this. The ink of the signatures is completely dried on this resignation. But the question always will remain, what was the justification for avoiding a vote on this resignation? You know, how is it any different than the hundreds that came before, the one others snack, or the ones that will follow three years to come? You know, the now former employee self-reported a breach of all. After a two-month investigation by the district and the DOE, a resignation came to the board level and it was not voted on. There are no allegations of criminality, no arrests, seizure of electronics, or a formal approach by law enforcement. Final determination was simply that, failure to properly set and abide by appropriate boundaries for the student. People can read into that any way they want, but the district's governing body as a whole should not. The lack of a vote sends the wrong message. It should have been processed the same way every resignation has before. I'm a strong believer in board policy. It was one of the things that was my major thing when I was on the board. Board policy is a major undertaking for the structure of our school system. There are always going to be failures to follow, administer those policies by both employees and students. But the board should always take extra care to make sure they're following the own policies that they set. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I will sub a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.